I did some research on the water.
Are we recording live?
Oh, live, oh.
Yeah, and we're total, uh, right about there. We're totally seventy, eighty-six. No, it's, it's, I saw, yeah. The difference of, uh, the difference of forty-five to forty-six. You usually start from, you know.
Yeah, so it started rolling camera.
If people want to watch, you wouldn't want to see, could pick one out or something like that. Yeah, it's a lot of snapper.
What you were trying to say.
So when Bill comes in, we shouldn't say happy birthday. A lovely birthday to you for a couple days. And now. Yeah, but I, I don't know what to, I don't know what to say. I, I'm in positive, I can choose this way to hold it. It's like the train without a track.
We didn't have to see that behind us. I know. That was his point. That was his problem. That I've never stopped seeing my house. There is a, there is a high speed.
I need, I need, I was talking to him a couple weeks ago. He gave me a hard time. Well, you always say, which, which are.
That was a little lost, stay out here.
I wouldn't say twenty-five, Jason personally. I thought it was. I thought it was an assist. They really say, they were very strict about that. And they advertised something, you had to write.
Yeah, right at this.
It took me quite a while to find this. I find it, it's kind of, I'm sure it's turned, and I found that I just, it's still very. I could, I guess I could call, I wasn't calling because I had to.
Okay.
Jeez. Okay, thank you for doing that. Thank you, I would not have started right on this. That was really nice. Locking down my nameplate. It wasn't there. I don't, I don't do. Bill, challenge.
Hold it down, okay. You're welcome. There's more.
He's selling it?
No.
Want to try some? Very small, I think, I know.
Hey, John, John.
It looks like the Marvel man in that paper. Minus the cigarette. Working over the, the maple.
I said, well, those guys done the moonshiners.
I told you.
Subjects come up.
So let's, yeah, somebody gave me.
I put, I was, the first one went by, I swear, eight miles an hour. She's going to be fine. Um, it's not as punctual, plus the staff are trying out here. So now we have five. Uh, no, I don't know. Well, China.
Because the worst thing is the turnout here might be destroyed.
How, which way are you going to go with that? Do I land it or am I just going to have to? Well, that's easy. We can just rip that addition up. I asked any of it, it's quite an interesting situation. I can't.
This time, yeah, I should say.
I'll walk down him at that point.
I would have rather have done him.
And it is this motion.
You know, don't have.
And we're not going to the end for, um, we're just going to have the discussion of, I'm here now to get the federal public hearing on these budgets. Mr. Webber, you should do all three things.
Okay, let me know what you want to hear.
What are we trying to do here? What are we trying to do? We'll just, we'll just, we'll just go with the flow. Ready to go?
It's okay, we're not being recorded, so I can.
Like to call this meeting of the Ledger Town Council order please join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, founded as law, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the vote, please?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes, here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Ledecky?
Here.
And I'm here, Cyril Austin.
At this time, are there any resident and property owners who would like to speak to the council? Hearing none at this time, I would introduce State Senator Kathy Austin to give us an update.
Do you want me to stand up here?
That'll be fine.
If you can hear, I don't know if you see recorded, so, okay. I know, I know, I'm not really doing good. I'm going to ignore the camera because I didn't, I didn't wear my Sunday vest, so I'll just, sort of, just be in a regular attire. I was asked to come here tonight, sort of, to tell you what's going on up in Hartford as we speak. While you all know that we just passed the gun legislation, I also voted against the gun legislation, so it's not on the winning side of this issue, but we've spent an inordinate amount of time talking about it. And my understanding is we're going to head into budget talks over the next little bit. Before some of you came in, I let people know that we have talked about the budgeting concept and not in specificity. I plan on treating the state budget much the same as I have treated my town budget over the last six years as first selectmen, and that is I tend to be extremely tight with other people's money, and I plan on doing that. That being said, I would tell you that I've also been to several of the other towns, and I've told them the same thing. Money is tight up in Hartford, and I'm not of the mindset to increase our, our liabilities, to put extra dollars out there. I would encourage people to be as tight as you possibly can on your own town budgets, because I don't see a lot of money coming out of Hartford to replace additional expenditures. I think that there'll be money out there for infrastructure. There is some money for school safety, so if you have projects that you would like to see done in your schools, I would encourage the superintendents and the appropriate people to apply for the grant money that's there. I imagine that people are going to be applying for it quickly, so I would do that as soon as you possibly can. So I sit on four committees. I'm on public safety as a member. I'm on veterans as a member. I'm a co-chair of planning and development. And in planning and development, in regards to municipal issues, we've done a couple of different things. We've had two large mandate bills that we've looked at. We are, and I'm really proud of them, Steve Casano, Senator Casano, and Senator Casano are on it. Senator Casano is also a previous first selectman. So we all looked at ways that we could eliminate some of the mandates, and one of the ones that we're eliminating is the legal notices, should it pass both chambers of the House and the Senate, but it's come out of committee already. And what we're trying to do is to say, we still want people to know about what's going on, so we'll put the headlines of an event in the paper, and then the verbiage you'll put on your town websites, and we say that if someone calls, the town clerk will mail them out a hard copy. We don't think you'll get a lot of people to do that, but should you have people that are interested in that, that'll, that's part of the bill. The other one is a piece that we went through and did, went through some old laws going back to nineteen forty-nine to try to eliminate some of the mandates that no longer made sense. In the grand scheme of things, I don't think that it's going to impact your budget in a large, in large dollar mills, but it's a beginning, and we plan on looking at more mandates in the next session also. I'm also the chair of labor, and in labor, one of the bills that passed out that I do not believe I've talked with your mayor, and I don't think it impacts budget, on the municipal employee retirement system, we increased, for the first time in fifty years, the employees' percentage of payments, so, in order to bring that back into balance. So I don't think that that really impacts you, because I don't think you're in the moor system, but it is something that we're looking at very strongly to see how we can bring sort of balance in for municipal governments, whether in labor or in planning and development or any of the other committees. And that's sort of, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if you have anything in specific you would like me to address.
Yes, sure.
First, I'd like to welcome you to Ledger. I know you've been here many times meeting the mayor, but this is the first time you've come before our council, and I tend to think we're a rather friendly bunch, so I don't think you have a lot of problems here. I noticed, though, that the legal notices the day had a full page ad in it opposing you.
Yes.
And I, I mean, I would, I would expect that the newspapers would oppose it because newspapers need the revenue, but in small towns, our legal notice budget is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
And, you know, that doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a lot when you realize if you do a lot, we go over that budget sometimes, so I really appreciate something that allows us to just put a little teeny headline and not publish the whole thing in the paper, because for us, it means a lot of money. Well, and I would just encourage you not to change your budget this year, because it won't pass through the assembly until probably having an effective date. I'm hoping to have an effective date of July or October, and I did, the Norwich Fulton also opposed the, the legislation. I expect that, and they, and, and the newspapers in general spoke against us doing this. I understand that people have a right to know about things, and I don't expect to eliminate people's right to know, but we are in electronic age, and we need to move into that. And you're right, twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, in my opinion, you know. Well, I would, I would guess the newspapers, for them, it's a lot of revenue loss, so I understand them opposing it, but I don't think that publishing in the paper, people didn't read them anyway. I think being able to have them electronically, refine them on the town's website, I think people go to the town's website more than they look at these little public hearing notices in the newspaper. So I don't think it's going to hurt the public's right to know, and I appreciate your effort on that, Bill. Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from town councillors? Councillor Song?
Senator Austin, I just want to thank you for your vote on the gun legislation. I had the good fortune of seeing you the night before the vote, and also Representative Bowles, and I, I felt personally like you were paying attention to that issue, and I know that we didn't prevail, and that's unfortunate, and I won't get into that. But I just want to say that I felt like I was listened to, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. And I, and I do listen to what constituents say on, on every issue. I, I can tell you that sometimes it takes me a day or two to get back to people, but we try to get back to everybody in a timely fashion on, on that particular issue. You know, I, I would just say out loud that it's, I'm a Vietnam or a veteran, the Second Amendment means a lot to me, so do the other, so does the First Amendment. I tend to not want to limit people's rights in regards to those sorts of things. I feel very strongly about it, very strongly. And I appreciate people's comments, too.
Any other comments or questions from town councillors? Mayor Rothelico, do you have anything?
No, we, I, I've already asked. We spent a lot of time together.
We, we've talked a lot, and I will tell you that you can invite me to come anytime. I'm never afraid to come and represent a vote that I've made. I, I think about what I, when I vote on something, and if you have something, you know, and I, and I plan on meeting with you in regards to some rental housing issues, but I think that, you know, that it's important that you know that I'll come and speak in front of you at any time to answer any questions, and you can criticize me on any vote I make. I, I may argue something here or there, but I always think about every vote I make, and I try to keep my constituents in mind on every vote, and I tend to be very frugal with other people's dollars. I'll tell you, I'm a little bit not frugal with my own dollars and my grandchildren, but I allow to do that. You know, they're somebody I can, I can be a little bit lavish with, but I would appreciate it if you'd have me back and, and ask me any questions, and if you need something and I can help out, I certainly would love to do that. And I, you guys did a great job in regards to the fire that you had, the firefighters did a, I saw, she's, it's a phone on the TV this morning, so, you know, it's always hard, and you have somebody that loses everything, it appears to me that they did a tremendous job in protecting as much as they could.
Well, we appreciate you being here. Thank you for giving us the time, and we will have you back, so thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Are there any town councillor comments?
First, I actually met with Kathy Austin and Tom Bowles, we're at the firefighters banquet with the, with the mayor on Saturday night, it was a lovely event. I was extremely impressed with how Galesbury Fire Department has fixed up their hall. It was beautiful, and I'd like to congratulate their firefighter of the year, Nick Bosom. And the fire today was, was quite an accomplishment to put the fire out, but unfortunately, there was a firefighter injured, my soon-to-be daughter-in-law, but she'll be fine, but as I was telling the mayor, the worst thing is that maybe her turnout here may be destroyed. And that's a big expense to the town, but she'll be fine, and, and they worked very hard to save that house.
As I say every year, about the time the weather starts warming up, please remember that motorcycles are everywhere. We're starting to see a lot of them on the roads again, so please remember they're out there, and if you're a biker, please remember there's a lot of sand still on the road, so just be careful.
It starts sweeping the woods, or?
A lot of houses.
Yeah, the rest.
Councillor Song?
Friday night was a very enjoyable evening for myself and my family. We went to see, first, we went to the four-H-ZD supper, which is always a great event, good food, and lots of community, and then we went to see Sweet Laughs, which is put on by the elementary schools, and it was superb. We had a lot of local restaurants providing desserts, and for twenty bucks, you got five little desserts and three really funny comedians. I, I was totally impressed with the quality of the comedian. They were hilarious. My daughter says, Dad was laughing out loud, she couldn't believe it.
Thanks, Phil. Councillor Marshall?
I'd just like to publicly acknowledge and thank a couple of local businesses. A first little backstory, a couple of weeks back, our ECO had a mild heart attack. Two of the dogs had escaped off the door, and we're heading for kind of like the highway, and she takes her safety and will be being very seriously. She caught him, got him back inside safely, and within half an hour, the folks at Double-A Lock &amp; Key had heard about this, and they come up and they installed recharge bars on the door, the lock door handles, so dogs can't jump on them and get out, and there's no fence to contain them. So Bill from Sprigs and Twigs had also heard about this, and he contacted the ECO, and he is donating the fence to Coles in the front of the ECO building, and he contacted Luther Fence, John Luther from Luther Fence, and he's going to install it. So in a matter of a few weeks, the kennel will be puppy safe, recharge to town, and when it's up, in operational, we're going to have a ribbon cutting and a pick at the same time. Why not? And everyone's invited, so look forward to details regarding that.
It's amazing what people can do. The great residents. Yeah, but it, Sprigs and Twigs is in town, A-Lock &amp; Key is in town, I mean, it's great.
Yeah, within, within a day, it's all put together, and this is not a problem, we'll get you a fence in the front, and this will never happen again.
And she recovered from the mild heart attack?
Yes, she did recover very nicely.
Sort of, it sort of reminds me of the cat up the tree story. Oh, yeah.
Where I reported there was a cat up the tree, up a tree, and despite the fact my husband always says, have you ever seen a skeleton of a cat in a tree? This cat was never coming down. It was fifty mile an hour winds, and this cat was just up there, and so I put the word out on the forum, and within thirty minutes, we had Sprigs and Twigs, Browers, and who's the third tree person in town?
Smith?
E.J. Smith, all out there at the same time to rescue this cat.
And it was a happy ending.
And it was a happy ending. Little kids got, came down and, but they cling to the, to the trees up there, even in the blowing wind. Anyway, I digress. Any other comments, any comments at this time? Okay, moving on to approval minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Your actions, Roxanne, would you call the vote?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledecky?
Yeah.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Excellent job.
Motion carries. You have your communication list. There was at least one referral. Council Subcommittee Liaison Reports, Councillor Eichelberg admin.
Administration Committee met earlier this evening. We have approved the language of the tax abatement, we have approved the language of the tax abatement. The tax abatement has not yet been approved, but we have approved the language in the tax abatement, so we're trying to move that forward. We also went and set a public hearing for the ordinance concerning peddlers, hawkers, sellers, the Avon lady, and all those other people.
So I guess we can act on the old business, I haven't changed the date.
We'll get down there, yep. And we made some reappointments and appointments tonight.
Very good. Any questions, Councillor Eichelberg? Will the tax abatement go to the attorney first?
It's going, I believe it's going back to finance from here, and I'm sure it will get to the attorney.
Oh, yes.
Councillor Marshall, Community Service?
We will meet again until tomorrow evening.
Finance, Councillor France?
Finance Committee met last week, and a major event was bringing forward the budget, which will be active all tonight, and all the other items will be addressed during the agenda.
It was actually a very, a very meeting.
Yes, I understand. Any questions for finance? Councillor Song's Information Technology.
We did meet last Tuesday, and several things on the agenda that we noted, primarily, the first one was the progress being made by town employees and use of the town websites, as well as IQM2 with the assistance of the MIS Director and Roxanne. And there has even been progress made in using the kiosk in the Land Use Department, although it's slower than expected due to change requests to make it functional for their needs. But the mayor has made it clear that, that we are going to a paperless environment, and we're going to online systems, and the benefit is, when you're online, lots of work is done in the background, and we have more information, we do a better job of tracking things like permits and completion of permits and building projects. We also discussed TRB Media's proposal to develop an educational video for the town about recycling, and after lots of discussion between the town, through the mayor's office, and also with the Board of Ed about sharing the costs for that video, the mayor's assistant, Mark Bancroft, went to SCARA and asked them if they had any funds to produce a video, and they said they would be interested in helping us with that. And the only thing is, it's going to be approved from New London County, so that we can, it can be used countywide to promote recycling, and it's really supposed to be educational, so that people understand what's recycled, recycled, how far we've come, the benefits, both financial and to the environment. So the Board of Ed, Mr. Merrill reported that Dr. Grineer already has a student lined up to produce the video, is going to be working with Mr. Edwards, and at no cost to the town. So this is great progress, and I thank the mayor's office for that. We also discussed, or continue to discuss, the emergency services software platforms, and we decided we would reach out to the emergency services groups, the fire departments, the departments, and the police, and dispatch to talk about this further, because there's a lot of benefit in having a common software platform. So we'll be sending a letter out to them, asking them to come back and meet with us. Finally, we looked at the C-Task grant, and we've asked Mr. Edwards for help in applying for, whether there is something we should apply for, because the Cable TV Advisory Committee has provided hundred percent funding for software and hardware, and we've made excellent use of those grants in the past, including these microphones and a flat screen TV to better communicate with the public. And that's my report.
Any questions for IT Committee?
Yes. One quick question regarding the permit kiosk. Does, does the kiosk have the ability to email, let's say, a PDF copy of what it is that somebody enters? So if we're going truly paperless, can it be emailed? Can they put in their email address and have a copy emailed to them?
That's beautiful.
You, you complete form, basically, you're completing the paper forms that we use today.
You complete them online, and that's a good question, because you need, you need a permit. You need a paper copy.
Yeah, you can put your email address in there, which we're going to encourage people to do.
Absolutely.
The way it should work, and I'm pretty sure it will, is the person, you know, I liken it to, you know, you're buying a pair of socks from LLB. You know, before you get off their site, we got an email waiting for you, you know, we received your order. At the same time, all of the approval authorities get an email at the same time. So, you know, there may be, now I'm going to give the advertisement here a little bit, but, you know, there may be some reluctance for people to have to do something that they haven't done traditionally, but from an approval standpoint, which is always a concern, you know, instantaneously, everybody gets the message and could literally, within minutes, approve the document, plus the end, the end approval, who will usually be the building official, will, you know, has asked that he constantly come in and monitor, you know, who's waiting for what. It's very similar to what Roxanne does with IQM2. Similarly, permits, you know, sad as it sounds, there are people who drive across town to pick up their permit, totally unnecessary. You know, they can, you know, once it's approved, the permit gets emailed, you know, first you can download the permit, so.
Right.
But there's, there's tremendous advantages here. We have to educate ourselves, we have to educate the public.
That's great.
Any other questions for IT? I'm kind of hoping that when the kiosk is ready, that we have like a little ribbon cutting.
It's, it's, it's up and running.
Can we have like a council demo?
We want to have like a grand opening in the kiosk.
Yeah, yeah, find some, some developer in town that will be our giddy pick. Sounds good.
Serve refreshments.
Councillor Dabrowski, Land Use Refund?
We also been last Tuesday, we had representatives from the Applebee Land Conservatory, this Anne Robert Pearson and this Michael Goodman met with us. They submitted a list of properties, a letter, a presentation, requesting ten parcel of property that are downtown loan property, be transferred over to them, probably about twenty-one acres worth of property that are adjacent to their existing land preserves, some continually make trails and stuff like that, so something we can, we can be considering in the future. Of course, that would end up for the town meeting since the transfer of land. Councillor Song should say that he walked the unmade force of land down the road, missed a land. Counselor Song said that he walked the unpaid portion of Landtown Road, Mr. Lam, you know, several other residents in the area. Go through the process again to the Landtown Road, that they had seen a road back in 1984. Due to some of the maintenance that was done in the past, the road had been a little bit lightened. So as before, we closed it for the winter. We agreed the minimal maintenance on the road, a lot of the straw we had to return back to somewhat of a natural state. And then there's also the discussion of what's possible to an permit road closure for the unpaid portion of Landtown Road, and we'll be continuing to discuss. While back, the council had forwarded the land use discussion that was brought up by ACO at one of the council meetings, pre-crawling and harvesting the residents on downtown property. We had sent a letter to the Conservation Commission asking their opinion, since most of the property that would be open space falls under their administrative purview. They responded with a letter back, finally saying that their concern due to safety liability and also the appropriateness of what gets thrown down, taken down, and could be considered, you know, not conserving the land. So they recommended to not move forward with that. We have several things on the agenda tonight. One is to move the administrative control of the open property to the Conservation Commission. We've also forwarded a recommendation for, to accept some open spaces at the Cedar Heights subdivision. We've also started to look at Road Order 45, based on residents' inquiry, and preliminary determination that you want to allow us to town immediately to make some changes to improve site plans, as long as the final had built plans are submitted once the development is finished. And we are also continuing to go work with Planning and Zone Commission and Public Works directly to update Order 45. Then we started looking at potential uses of the Clark Farm, short term, and we considered the consensus of the committee was to continue to lease the property out for farming, and we're going to continue to discuss it for long term, in the next five and 10 years before we move it to that property. And that's my report.
Any questions for Counselor Dombrowski? Counselor Song?
Have an update. The Landtown Road extension was milled and regraded, and the, and that was some of the folks again from the road, and they were delighted. It's beautifully crowned, it's packed, it's smooth. They were really happy with the way they worked this town. So it's good job. Were the beavers happy? We didn't see any beavers, we didn't ask. The reason we crown the roads, because if you have a flat road, number one, you're pushing the material off to the side, it's getting wider. But also, when water sits on it, it ponds up, and that creates potholes as cars drive on it. So you want it crowned to shed water, and that's why the work was done, and it preserves the road. And part of the reason we closed it was, was when we piled snow, we're taking the crown off. So it was a good exchange.
Counselor Allen, Board of Ed Report?
Yes, the Board of Education did meet last Wednesday. They started with Principal Fagan had a presentation regarding student athletes, and Ledger High School is, I would say exemplary, in that they're, they have a 59% athlete participation rate, which is 14% higher than state average. And the wrestling team brought home their 19th state wrestling title, which is actually the most of any high school sport in the state. So it's athletically, they're doing fantastic. The final asbestos abatement project was put out to bid, and the bids are expected to be opened within a week or so. So that'll commence, get moving. And then a bulk of the meeting revolved around a new teacher evaluation plan. The state has mandated that teacher evaluations be changed, and Ledger is working on a hybrid model of that, which is taking a framework from the state's model and then incorporate our own principles into it, which I think is great. And it's based on eight or 10 different metrics in terms of, and they're all weighted individually as to how that's going to, how that affects the teacher evaluations. And those are going to be, they're prepared to start putting those in place this fall, so that they will start getting feedback on these in the spring of, or the end of the school year 2014. And then the final thing they did was they approved their, their school calendar for this coming school year. So for people that are looking way ahead already, even though school's not out, school will start on August 28th, there will not be school on Election Day this year. So even though it's a municipal election, they're not going to have school. They made the April Spring Break tied into the regional calendar, so that's, other towns don't have that. I guess we had a problem before with, you know, not being in line with other towns, so people that had kids in different towns were having a problem. And they are going to have school on Veterans Day this year. And the, the theory behind that is that they're going to bring veterans in, and kids are going to be educated about what veterans have done and what Veterans Day means. I think that's a positive step as well. And that's about it.
Any questions for Counselor Allen? Any other liaison reports?
WPC.
Oh, I'm sorry, I always do that to you. No, it's right, it's right on my agenda, actually. I don't know why. It must be because I'm disliked being on WPC.
I'm on I too. I'm on the block. Well, we didn't meet. But they did meet, we had them present their budget to the Town Council finding, it's coming on April 3rd, and that's on my, my agenda, so we'll talk about that then.
Thank you. Any other questions for Counselor Song? Any other liaison reports? I am actually a liaison to Parks and Recreation, but they keep canceling their meetings, and they canceled the next one. Remember, I complained about that at the last meeting, where they canceled the next one, so I have no reports.
Other than they canceled the meeting.
Okay, moving on, Mayor's Report?
Thank you, Chairman Mayes. Just to follow up on Ledger's Landtown Road extension, you know, I rode up that road today, I won't tell you how, but I did get to do that, and it was the first time I've ever ridden up that road that IT were in chatter. So they did, they did a great job. And it's been a remarkable success story, and I think, I say that because it was the effort of many people in the town, residents, our public works, making that happen. And, you know, I, when we were ready on November 15th to close, and I was ready, you know, for the barrage of phone calls, and it's absolutely amazing. No one called, no one complained about it. It was, you know, a very good, it worked out very well. You know, I got some messages on my phone this past week that, you know, it's the best the road has ever looked. Someone said, perfect, use the word perfect, just thrilled, and yes, we're starting to get some calls for year round closing. So what my proposal is, is to go through one cycle, which is, we can't do closing the road for the winter, so obviously we didn't do any more damage to it. We crowned the road, now we'll go through the spring, and summer, and part of the fall, see what happens, just on the normal wear of crowning the road does in fact keep it looking the way it does, and then get through the next winter and see what the condition is. And the criteria would be if the road really does hold up, because it did cost us a little less than $5,000 to crown that road. And if the road does in fact hold up, then we could say, well, we could go a couple of years, we'd both open and close. However, if it does degrade again, I would say we probably want to revisit it. And it sounds like now, because we closed it temporarily, we have some of the people who opposed it on board. There are some legal issues we probably have to get through and so, but it is a possibility. There was a meeting this past week, and it's a subject that some of you may be familiar with, it concerns the three dams and spillways up on Lawn Pond. And we, we had a meeting over a year ago with our elected officials at that time, and with First Selectman Nick Mulane from North Stonington, because part of one of the dams is in North Stonington. We really had just been doing some legwork, and most of the residents have been doing that, but we wanted to reconvene and just get some input from our new representatives. Senator Austin has some experience with this in her own town and some other towns, she's very knowledgeable about it. And a way forward was developed to write to DEPP to see if there's potential funding to do a study on these dams. And again, first disclaimer, you know, I am a resident and a member of the association that theoretically owns these dams, so, okay, now, you know, that's full disclosure. At the time this began, though, I didn't know that that was going to happen. So what we have to look at, though, is that there, and I'm not going to get into the issues. I'll let any of you spend the, since a couple of hours after the meeting with Mr. Monahan. But, you know, it's not just the fact that there's property owners around there, but there's the fact that there's a major benefit both to the town and to the state of that pond. And from a liability standpoint, we all remember what happened in March of 2010 with just some of the flooding. Could you imagine if something lets loose up there, what would happen in the towns of Stonington and Groton in terms of damage and the liability and potential losses? So, you know, we're trying to get some attention to this. I've made it very clear that, you know, municipal ownership of those dams, I don't see that happening unless it had some very, very large dollar signs attached to it that would allow us, you know, to get grants and do some work there. I don't know that the dams themselves are suspect in terms of their adequacy, it's more when they classify them, it's more in terms of the potential for damage should something happen. So just be aware of that. Just an update on Dispatch. The town did send letters requesting ROM, a rough order of magnitude costs to both Groton and Montville, and from the inquiries we're getting, they are working on that. I am also, I have been working with our own dispatch to get answers to questions, but I will, I will tell you that I'm having difficulty getting the information that I need, which I think is fair to have from all three potential buyers. There has been the issue raised about, you know, the order of decisions, you know, the decisions regarding an independent police force, a police building, and dispatch, and, you know, what should come first. And, you know, you really have to make a decision on an independent police force before you make a decision on a police building, and before you make a decision on dispatch. Well, you can go, you could go through one of these triangles, you know, everything depends on everything. For instance, you need a building if you're going to have dispatch, and therefore, we need a new police building, or we will not have a place for dispatch, because the building they're in now is just not sustainable. So without a new building, dispatch would be difficult. Without dispatch, an independent police department could be difficult. So, you know, these are all interrelated, so it's easy, you know, however, on the other hand, some of the decisions are very easy. An independent police force is a very easy decision. A new building is not quite as easy, and dispatch is probably the most difficult. So again, I would urge anyone, you know, I'd be happy to sit down with them, there are many discussions going on, with many entities involved in this. It's taken more than I would have liked, but I'm satisfied with the people who are helping and advising us. As was mentioned, there was a very serious fire at South Glen Woods, and we had excellent response by both of our fire departments. And also, I got my first appreciation of having fire hydrants. Because one of the first things I was told is that within minutes, they will hook up to a fire, a hydrant, and we're able to knock down the fire. And, you know, for those of us in Ledger who remember the old days, that was something you wouldn't even think about. But, you know, it is something that we can really appreciate, how doing so in progress. Along the issue of water, I talked to Counselor Song, who mentioned it, we were very disappointed. We only received one bid for the Avery Hill Pump Station. It was not what I considered to be a credible, sorry, I was throwing that thing. It really was obviously a credible bid, but I don't know that it was very competitive. And unfortunately, I think we're going to have to go out, I, the WPC will have to decide whether or not to go out to bid. It's unfortunate, and it's almost a little bit of a reflection of what's happening in the construction industry around here. I think that has something to do with it. That is unfortunate, because I think that project has been long overdue. I don't think that it was given the diligence by some of those people who employed, and it's unfortunate, it's going to be now another delay to something that should have happened a while ago. So I'm disappointed, but we will do our part. That's more important.
Any questions from Mayor Brodeleyko? Wow.
Well, I would just say, I noted your comments about those of us in Ledger, welcome to this side of the tracks, welcome to the Ledger side of town.
He's got a big lake near his.
I spent five years in Gales Ferry, so I owe, and five years in Ledger, so I owe 30 more years to Ledger.
There you go.
We have a pond there, so they have ready waters.
That's true.
Well, those of us in Gales Ferry, the capital of Ledger, are sorry to see you leave.
Unfortunately, as one resident informed me as I knocked on doors, he did not understand why I was wasting my time. I just did run from Mayor of Yale Street. So.
I guess you didn't waste your time.
Okay, old business. Counselor Eichelberg, are we ready for this one?
We are.
Oh, pretty.
So. She's going to wait for this one.
Yep, she wants this one.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on May 8th, 2013, at 6:45 PM in the council chambers, Town Hall Annex 741, Colonel Ledger Highway, Ledger, to receive comment on the proposed ordinance regulating peddlers, hawkers, street vendors, itinerary vendors, and solicitors in the town of Ledger, as contained in the draft on March 21, 2013. Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion?
Is that the correct draft? Sounds like the draft was dated to 1913, the way it's written.
I'm sorry?
Sounds like the draft was written 1913, the way it's named.
Is this one of those ordinances that prevents little Susie from having her lemonade stand, like is she on TV?
It prevents you from bothering her.
We have had some incidents last summer with some very persistent, unlicensed, unpermitted vendors who were quite free with the truth. I had some of that experience myself, and the mayor's office handled it very well, but I think this is something that all residents will appreciate.
To stop half door cars from appearing wherever people decide to park them. Little Susie's lemonade stand's going to be in Little Susie's front yard, probably, so it's not going to affect anything.
Yeah.
I would hope she had it on your office. I would hope the parents would cram a rock somewhere.
You've got to move it. Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Ledecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Ickleburg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Would anybody like to amend the agenda at this time?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Oh, wait.
I don't know if it's proper, but I would request that the council consider amending the agenda to add a motion concerning funding for spending municipal funds in support of a coming public hearing. I can do more detail than that.
I printed out page one, unfortunately, the wording's on page two. Do you have that? Would you like to make that motion, Counselor France?
I've been the agenda to, in accordance with section, what do you want to call the motion? In accordance with, the motion to, that, in accordance with section 9, there's 369 B of the Connecticut State Statutes, the mayor's authorized to expand municipal funds from preparation and printing materials concerning this, the proposal for the middle school and the police station bond issues, construction issues. I have a question, providing these materials, do I advocate the approval or disapproval of the proposal or question?
Second. Would you, somebody like to clarify that for those that are listening?
The, as I understand it, there's a limitation on what the funds can be used for, and that you can use funds, but you cannot be an advocate in one way or the other. If you're for or against, you can. If you're for or against, you can provide factual material. And so, that is what we're authorizing is the use of town funds to provide information to the general public.
Because we have two very large bonds projects coming up, and information needs to get out to the public. And other towns have gotten in a lot of trouble when they cross that line, but I know we won't cross that line because we know the line. And I think we need to get information out. I agree with this, we need to get information out there for the public. They need to understand the two projects and why they're being done.
If I could, the, the first indication we had is that we absolutely could not do anything, once the council acted this evening on these projects, could not expend any public funds. When we had, we had, our town clerk had a conversation today with someone in Archer. And the first thing they realized is that our town meetings are mandated by our charter. And when he heard that, that was a whole different story, because now it's a charter-driven town meeting. Obviously, you can expend funds to support that. But we indicated that we might be having public hearings, and that statute was very appropriate, and it just said that the legislative body just needs to authorize those funds. And we're not really talking about funds, we're talking about, you know, me and Dr. Brinier sitting at our computers on town time. And, you know, even strange as it is, you cannot do that. We would have to use only materials that were generated before that point, which may not be appropriate for the public hearing. So, just to be on the safe side, as Councilor Weckey said, it's probably a good idea to have this.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call it? Yes.
I only have a question right now. We're not voting on the motion, or you're not voting on the amendment.
Too many.
Correct. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mrs. Weckey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Would anybody else, does anybody else have anything they would like to add to the agenda?
No.
I would like to, sorry.
You're going to do someone else?
I would like to amend the agenda to include a discussion and possible action on holding a public hearing for the middle school and police building projects.
Second.
The reason for that is, right now, we have not, no public hearing scheduled. And we may not agree to do it, but I would at least like to have a discussion.
Why would we have a public hearing?
That's the discussion we'll have when we get to that item.
Okay. If you don't normally have one, that's fine. I think we should, we should.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Sam?
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Weckey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number six. Councilor Eichelberg.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Margaret E. Wilson, Democrat of Sixth Eagle Ridge Drive, Gales Ferry, to the Commission for Senior Citizens for a two-year term ending December nine, two thousand fourteen, to fill a vacancy left by Ms. Inman.
Second. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number six. Councilor Eichelberg.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Joanne Kelly, Democrat of Twelfth Tamesview, Pentway, Gales Ferry, to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a four-year term ending December five, two thousand fifteen, to fill a vacancy left by Ms. Mortensen.
Second. Any discussion?
I was about to find somebody.
I was, I was just going to add that this goes to show how social media can be so beneficial because I put the word out that we needed somebody, and two people actually came forward, so.
And this has been vacant for over a year, so.
It's a difficult position to, to find, so. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dobraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Number seven.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Joanne Kelly, Democrat of Twelfth Tamesview, Pentway, Gales Ferry, to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a four-year term ending December five, two thousand fifteen, to fill a vacancy left by Ms. Mortensen.
Second. Any discussion?
I was about to find somebody.
I was, I was just going to add that this goes to show how social media can be so beneficial because I put the word out that we needed somebody, and two people actually came forward, so.
And this has been vacant for over a year, so.
It's a difficult position to, to find, so. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dobraski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Sam?
Yes.
Mr. McGaw?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Okay. Fine, now we get to the, the biggies. Councilor France?
I make a motion to waive the reading in its entirety, the resolution appropriating forty-five million dollars for the design and construction of additions and renovations to Ledger Middle School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation. In addition, adopt the resolution appropriating forty-five million dollars for the design and construction of additions and renovations to Ledger Middle School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
If he's going to vote for this, he's going to be reading a long document.
That's all the first.
Yeah, with, with those numbers in there, just, let's clarify.
He's, he's moving to waive the reading of it.
Exactly. I want, I want people to know that we're not authorizing money, we are just.
And we're adopting.
We're not even, yeah.
The second half is adopting.
Yeah.
It's not the resolution which, if, if passed in a referendum, would authorize the borrowing of forty-five million dollars after the town meeting, and if public hearings are held on the subject, that's what we're voting on.
Up to forty-two million dollars.
I like those words.
Well, I, I say up to because we heard from the mayor that the town of Putnam went out for forty-two million dollars, and their school project came in at thirty-two million dollars. So, the fact that, that this has a big number on it, I mean, I've looked at the cost estimates because we requested those, because I really think that this number's much larger than it needs to be. And we had the discussion that the, the actual addition by John Marshall, Council Marshal's calculation shouldn't be more than five million dollars, and they're saying it's going to cost fifteen million dollars. So, I suspect that maybe in the fifteen million dollars, there's a few things that we won't choose to build in it. So, I, I'm of the belief that this project will come in significantly lower, and that's why I'm saying it's up to forty-five million dollars, because the town doesn't spend any more money than they have to. And if it comes in at a much lower price, we will not spend forty-five million dollars to tease up the money.
If I might, if I may add that, I would certainly agree, because I did a little research today. And to put it in perspective, the project in Waterford, for Waterford High School includes the renovation of one hundred thousand square feet of the existing building and the addition of a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, for a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, for sixty-seven million. Ours is eighty-six thousand square feet, less than half, for forty-five million. Those numbers make no sense to me at all.
The numbers, if you look at the cost estimates, it doesn't say this much a dollar per square foot, they're just numbers. And it's like, nobody took the time to do detailed numbers, which is the one thing that upset me, because I think we're going out for a project with a price tag that is the highest price tag that this town has ever seen. It makes me stop and gasp. And I don't think it's going to cost that much. And I, my fear is that people will shoot it down because the price tag is so big, and the project may come in significantly less. Because nobody has really typed, you know, taken those pencils and really sharpened them. And it's not been with the building committee long enough for them to have come forward with a different amount. So, I think, I take a little, it bothers me to see such a large number, where I, I just can't fathom that it should cost that much money.
One of the things I was talking with Councilor Davis earlier about is, when I looked at the numbers, there are some detailed numbers, and there is significant foundation here. And the initial proposal for this building was essentially using the structure and then building inside. However, by building that atrium on the inside and doing the demolition of that foundation, you are now tying yourself into putting footings in underneath, digging down underneath that to support that, because you're now putting new structural walls in there. So, you know, why, my concern is that, that may be a significant cost driver for a space that really doesn't add a lot of value, certainly has minimal educational value. It also takes away the potential, some of the concerns been raised by residents, what if we have an increase in the number of students? Well, it takes away a substantial amount of square feet that could be used to expand the number of classroom structural spaces. Because the structure itself has no interior, essentially no interior structural walls. So, you can build lots of non-structural walls to build other instructional spaces. However, if you cut that space out and take away the foundation, and you put a nice atrium in there, that no longer is the case. And as I look through it, there's a significant amount of foundation work, probably several million dollars in foundation work, that may be primarily driven by that one little nice-to-have project that doesn't have any of the.
And as I understand it, the real driving factor is there is to allow natural light for those inner classrooms.
And I would say the high school has their classrooms, and it doesn't seem to have a lot of natural light. And I'm not certain that, given the height of the walls, that you're going to get a substantial amount of natural light, direct light in there, given the size of the space and the height of the, of the walls. It also buys you into a substantial roof, roofing change that you might not have to do if you leave the exterior the same.
Right.
So, there are, and that roof, as I recall, is somewhere in the one to two million dollar range. So, there's a lot of expense tied to that one chink, one addition that adds nothing to the educational benefit of the space. It actually runs the risk of, if the demographics change in the town, you end up with another bill or trying to expand a space that you don't have a lot of.
But this project, are we tied directly to those plans? No. Changes can be made. It's going to the municipal building committee. I would hazard a really good guess that they're looking at forty-five million dollars to hiccup it too. So, I would guess that they would try to do anything they could in their power to reduce the cost and keep the instructional space. I disagree with you a little bit, that I think the atrium would have provided some benefit because of the natural sunlight, and it would save a little bit of money if the light actually got into the classrooms. But if it's a substantial cost driver, it might be something that becomes a nice-to-have instead of we need to have this.
And the point that you already made is, if the residents see this very high price tag and vote it down, even though the cost in reality might come in significantly less, I think it behooves us to try to get that number as good as we can.
Unfortunately, if we vote on this motion right now, it's going forward with that on the question. And that's the scary thing. It's going to be on the ballot, but that, you know, if we later on go on and allow public funds to be spent, if we find out that this pri, I don't know how from between now and the vote, we're going to find out a difference in the project, because nobody seems to want to change the price. And I asked for the questions, I asked for the breakdown, because my concern has always been that I felt this number was too high, and high enough such that it might defeat a project that we really need. And so, that's been my biggest fear, is, is a big number. I mean, I, I almost fell out of my chair the first time I saw the number.
So, are we moving too fast just to try to get this to vote?
With, I think we're moving this fast because they want to get in before the bonding numbers change, because right now we're at sixty-two percent, and if we wait another year, the state reimburses less. So, and, and construction costs will go up, so I think there's been a driving force to move it to referendum, because it will cost us more if we don't go to referendum. But I just, I just want to say that I hope if it goes to referendum, I hope it does pass, and I hope it comes in significantly less than forty-five million dollars, because I believe it should.
I'd just like to add that the fine folks at O N G. used the same multiplier I did to get my figure, and were right, were within, I think, less than three dollars of each other on our square foot price. So, I think if they look at their numbers again, it will be significantly less than forty-five million dollars.
It has to be.
Our price per square foot, as it stands now, is like a third higher than what it should be.
Yeah.
Go ahead, the councilor. I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what I said last week, and you all heard, but for folks who are listening, I realize I'm late to the table with this idea, but I, I seriously like the town to consider the impact, not just to the school system and the quality of education, which is, I think everyone knows, I find very important, but I also want to look at the impact of Ledger residents. This school project is founded based on closing Ledger Center School. And while I understand that we have more, more elementary schools than we need, and we have to close one, closing the one in Ledger Center will, I believe, and according to the businesses, we talked to the Ledger Center four years ago, I believe it will do irreparable harm to those businesses. So, as we look at this for the value to the town, I think there's an impact that we should not ignore.
That study also pointed out, if the school was closed and used for retail space or torn down with retail and apartments.
It could be, but we've, we've had a, a Gales Ferry Elementary School for sale for twelve or however many years.
So, if we tore it down.
If we tore it down, there's a green field right down the road.
I, I didn't mean tear it down in, yeah, well, okay.
But, but there are two, two spaces, if you consider Ledger Center School as a green field. The other one is the shopping center coming soon property, just down the road that no one has built, no one has purchased, nothing has happened. So, I think we're, we're, we're overvaluing, or the perceived value of that property is higher than it, than it really is. And more importantly, if you did sell that property and put a, put a residential or a business complex there, it still won't bring the traffic to Ledger Center that the Gales, that the Ledger Center School does. And, and I have this information from when the Ledger Town Center Committee reached out to the businesses in Ledger and said, what, what would your thoughts be if we recommended closing the school? As a result, they had letters in the comments, we did not recommend closing the school. So, I think we have to look at the larger picture. Secondly, the idea of moving Ledger Middle School to Ledger Center would allow us to close Ledger Center School because we don't need it. It would allow us to build a new school there, which would be the new middle school, and solve the problem that we have at the old middle school. Comment was made, made by Dr. Brinier at the last town council meeting, that we don't have the athletic field space in the current property here of Ledger Center, but there is a huge piece of property immediately adjacent and behind that, that school, that has level li, level land, very high water table, it's not conducive to building anything but a pad structure or athletic fields. So, I'd like us to look a little more carefully at our options, and I don't think this option was considered because it's a relatively new idea.
It would be difficult to implement, because you can't build a new school without tearing down the school.
So, I'd like us to look a little more carefully at our options and I don't think this option was considered because it's a relatively new idea.
It would be difficult to implement because you can't build a new school without tearing down the school. And the other schools would have a hard time absorbing all those children.
But the plan that's been put forward is to close this school and have the other schools absorb those children.
Not sixth grade.
The sixth grade is moving
Going to the middle school.
Okay, gotcha there. You're right.
And they're moving out the, out of Gallup Hill School, the early education children. So, I mean, there is
But to work around the Legyard Middle School project, we're building and rebuilding while that school is in session, no reason we couldn't do the same thing here. So, I'm just going to vote no because I think we have to look more carefully about the doing of the town.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, it's a quick comment of Council Soms. Bill, I wish you'd come to that one sooner with this idea, I think.
I wish I had too.
And I think you're headed in a good direction with it, but unfortunately, I think we're a little late.
A little too far down the road.
I understand that and I wish I had to more than you probably don't. But in the interest of, you know, all the work that's been done, the twenty thousand dollars that was spent on an architect, that fails by comparison to the impact of these businesses. And if we take some business, if we put some businesses out of business in Legyard Center, what have we done? And I don't bring that up because I think it's a slight possibility. I think this is a tough economy and we've got some businesses on the edge. And if you take five or 10% of their traffic away, you could put them out of business.
You know, to that point, it feels like we're moving faster than we have to. And I understand, you know, what the state's going to reimburse and all of that. I just, I have this kind of bad feeling now that we're just pushing this through and
I tried to slow it down. We didn't get too much, I tried.
When we're talking about a potential for forty-five million dollars, I don't want to be as comfortable as I possibly can be.
Well, neither of us is comfortable with the number.
As I can be.
Any more discussion?
I can tell you that I lost sleep last night over this because that's when I started looking at this Waterford number. And the thing that was especially frustrating to me is that I know our building committee did spend more than an hour looking at this.
Correct.
And this has to do with process that I've been complaining about from the beginning. Didn't go through the process that it should have gone to, it never went to the building I'm just really, I'm really not sure which way to go. But assuming I vote for, it's going to be for one reason only, and that is if we wait a year, the percentage of reimbursement could really, I mean, we could, well, I told the story to several of you many, many, many years ago. We had a high school project
Oh, I remember that.
With the swimming pool.
Yeah.
And it was defeated. And by the time we got the project up and running
It was more expensive.
It was more expensive without the swimming pool. And I could kind of see that happening with this.
It happened with the fire station.
And so, for that reason, I'm going to support this, but I'm going to continue like Sharon is to continue to say that when the building committee looks at this, we really expect them to sharpen their pencils. Because there is no way this project, based on the numbers from Waterford, plus they're getting a hundred and fifty well geothermal system, a hundred and fifty well geothermal system. And just to Bill's point, I don't know, I don't know that I think that, maybe I think it makes some difference, but you know, they're open a hundred and eighty days. It's not year-round business for the school across the street. So, it's not kids, three hundred and sixty-five, teachers, parents, three hundred and sixty-five days, it's a hundred and eighty days. Plus, many of those kids will be going to the Gallup Hill School, I assume, going to get split, correct? So, don't those parents drive through the Legyard Center? The ones coming from?
I think that what they see is the traffic that parks at the school and walks across the street, or parks at the market and walks across the street. But I agree with you. I drive through the center of town all the time and I think, oh, I need to get something and I pull into Village Market. So, these people are still going to be driving through the center of town. Maybe because they see them walking back and forth, they think that's the only reason they come there. But most people use the places that are convenient for them. And if you're driving by it, taking your child to school, picking your child up to school, I don't think that it's going to see, I mean, some people may not stop and they're not going to get, like Valentino's may not get the teacher who would walk over and buy some lunch. But I still think, they may see, they may see a slight drop, but the educational value of putting the kids in a new school, to me, outweighs a little bit of that. I mean, I try to free-friend the Legyard businesses as much as I can because I want to keep them in town. I don't want them to close. I understand your concern, but I think we're, well, if the project doesn't pass, maybe we'll be revising some other issue. I hope that's not the case. I mean, I think, I think, Linda, I'm sitting here the same thing you are. I don't think this project should remotely cost as much money. I hate going to the voters with a project that I think is way overpriced. But I don't know how else to fix it without stopping it. And I, we tried in finance, we really tried to get, you know, have you guys really, really looked at this number and you do realize? I mean, I said to Dr. Mike, I said, I support the education in this town. I've supported every project we ever wanted to do. And I almost fell out of my chair when I saw the price tag. So, if I'm thinking that way, imagine someone who doesn't even support the schools, what they're thinking. And that still didn't connect to, we need to really look and see if it can be a lesser number.
I think a lot of the cost in the plan is drawn up as, I agree with Council France to a large extent about the foundations. I do think that's the right solution for that building. I think it's a beautiful solution. But I think the other part of the cost is driven by the fact that you are building while you're teaching. And when you hurry up and stop in a construction project, when you work on this part of the building, you have to sheet off the rest of the building, you can't do certain things while school's in session, then you have two months when it's out. So, if you have a whole lot done, you're paying overtime, that's, I think, what's driving a large part of the cost.
Have we looked at moving the kids to the high school or renovation or building?
No, no, it's not considered.
But Waterford had that same issue. And I keep focusing on Waterford, maybe that's not fair, but boy, I'll tell you what, I'd go for sixty-seven million. I'd look for that right now if we could get a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet for the police building and
High school, junior high school.
Yeah, we'd want a whole complex.
And that's just incredible. That almost looks like a bargain compared to our number, but really, it's probably a fair number and our number's not a fair number.
Another cost driver that goes along with what Mike talked about, as I recall, the
plan was to build the extension, which will eventually house the sixth grade, then move the seventh and eighth graders into that while they're building that whole atrium in the middle. So, it seems like
There's some other details. They're doing it three phases. Right, new addition, moving one grade into the addition, doing half the modernization, and then moving the other grade into that modernizer and doing the other half.
But certainly, certainly a big part of that includes that atrium in the middle.
That would be done during the summer, I'm sure, when the school is out. There's no way you could do the atrium and the structural walls to even still have any kind of education in place.
But that would scare me if it took longer than the two months to fix. That's why I would think that we should at least investigate whether the kids could be moved to the high school. I know the enrollment in the high school has dropped dramatically, but I don't know if there's enough empty classrooms to move them, but it might be something, or even one grade, to think about.
Just to put your mind at ease, I've worked at many schools while I've been in session and the, it's not as intrusive as it may seem to be. It's really not that bad.
The only one that would be is if they still hold an atrium there and the foundation left, there'd be need to be done. Other than that, you're right, you can do a big double work while the classroom's in session. I think Council Eckerberg's comment about time, it was basically three financial factors. One is the reimbursement, which is slated to go down next year. The second is the cost of money, the bonding rate, just going to go up. To that end, Dr. Brenier has worked with our representatives in the legislature to have a bill presented to bring it actually a year ahead, to bring it to now as opposed to waiting a year and be normal. So, I guess it was about, he said there are about forty or so projects and they take one or two and accelerate them. So, he's doing what he can to bring it even a year ahead to
That would fit.
And then the construction costs, obviously, are likely to go up. Those three driving factors are where we are and what is driving the speed. And it's really kind of driven by the state's structure. Really, really hamstrung to some extent by the timeline. I mean, we had had, Council Davis' point, if this project had gone into this building committee the same time the police station did ten months ago, we would be in a lot better shape coming forward now.
I believe in the number we would be, yes.
Was it better to borrow a lot of money at a lower rate or less money at a higher rate?
Well, you won't borrow any more money than it costs. We're only authorizing up to forty-five. This project comes in for bid thirty million dollars, you will only borrow. There's no authorization to spend on, oh, we got an extra fifteen million dollars, so I think I want to go put in soccer fields up at Harford.
And absolutely, the bonding documents allowed the municipal building committee to be the only committee, the only body that can decide if there's changes made to the scope of these documents. And the scope of these documents wouldn't allow them to build soccer fields somewhere else. So, they, yeah.
But what it's getting is if we wait till next year and the price goes up, the price of money goes up, will it be that bad if we sharpen our pencils on this money on this figure, this forty-five thousand dollars, it comes in at thirty thousand, but the cost is more draw than money, are we really going to have an idea?
No, it doesn't cost us more to borrow it. At this point, we're, it's cheaper for us to borrow it because the market, the rates is
The reimbursement rate is
The reimbursement rate will go down, cost of construction will go up, the cost of borrowing will go up, therefore, whatever the budget costs, the cost is more.
And you're talking about interest on thirty to forty-five million dollars over twenty years. So, that cost is
One point is huge.
It increases absolutely.
One point is huge.
So, as Sharon, Councilor Wodecki and Chairman Davis have both said, what we have to be very careful to do is press the point on getting the building committee to drive this number to where it needs to be.
Because I think we all agree that we need to do something.
They need to pay that around three hundred dollars a foot.
Well, we need to do something, we need to fix a problem of a school that's not functioning, it's not safe. There's, I mean, there are driving issues there that the safety concerns in itself and we need to fix it. It's just, let's just hope it's not.
Any other discussion? Council Soms, if it makes you feel any better, I'll have one more customer at three o'clock or at eight-thirty in the morning because I will not go to any of these stores at that time of day. You can't get in and out of them, it's a disaster.
Yeah, that is true.
Anyway, Roxanne, would you call and roll?
Mr. Eicherberg.
Sure, I gotta be first.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Soms.
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Aiden Haver, Warner Brothers.
Brooks.
Mr. Nebraska.
Sorry to announce your vote.
We know how you're voting.
The next item, Council France.
The motion waived the reading in its entirety, the resolution appropriating six million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design and construction of a new police headquarters facility and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount of finance set appropriation. In addition, adopt the resolution appropriating six million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design and construction of a new police headquarters facility and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount of finance set appropriation.
Second. Any discussion?
This was a lot easier.
Yep, I think I would say
Similar to the last resolution, that other than the dollar figure, the one difference is instead of the building committee being in charge, it changes to town council. Only real change in the bonding documents.
We weren't allowed to do it in the other
Correct.
document. So, this, this project, unlike previous one, I think, has been sharpened much better. I still think that considering the mayor is trying to hope it gets sharpened a little more, may even come in less, but this project will make major improvements to the town hall complex, which is a really big benefit to the property out here. So, I think, you know, I read the minutes to the last meeting and I read some of the comments and I haven't seen the social media comments saying that we are clueless and that we didn't research this enough, but I know that, I know several members of the council always wanted this project somewhere else. I've always wanted it here. And actually, it turned out that it is, but that's not, I never went to any building committee and I never expressed my opinion on where I wanted to build it today. But I believe putting it there benefits the town hall, it benefits the center of town, and I love seeing police presence in the middle of town, except when they're speeding by.
Councilor Allen, you pause now.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm a hundred percent in favor of the police having a new police station. I think it is a critical component to town. I'm happy that we're going to have the opportunity to sharpen our pencils on this project because at almost six hundred dollars a square foot, it's way out of line on the number. Having been involved in some commercial construction, Council Marshall could probably say the same thing, six hundred bucks a foot is not in line with a reasonable number for this project. So, we'll get to that point. We'll get to work on that and bring it in line so that it'll get done.
The only thing with this project is, while it may seem to be six hundred dollars a square foot, there's so many drainage issues and pavement issues and tanks being removed in the parking lot that that must add significant amount of money. Site work.
But it wasn't that different. If you put it out in a green field, that's
Yeah.
That's true, I remember that.
It's not, that's not
It wasn't a driver, it doesn't work. It's going to, it's a large driver that it's part of, it's stuff that wouldn't get done if we weren't doing this project.
I've lost total control. But everybody is, oh, why thank you, Council Eicherberg.
I would say I am much happier with the due diligence that has been done on this number. I would like to thank Mrs. Allen for the information that she sent out today in that email. Made me stop and think, you know, a little more carefully about this. You know, just because this isn't forty-five million, it's still in the millions.
Yes, it is.
And it's, you know, it's still a big number, more than I make.
More than we all make combined in a lifetime.
So, I am glad that we're going to be able to get the opportunity to really dig into these numbers, bring that number down to where it should be. But as Chairman Wodecki said, Chair, Councilor Wodecki says
Yes, I think
I am very happy to see this be put in the location that it's in. I think it's going to be a huge boon to the center of town. And yes, I understand that it's not going to draw the kind of traffic to the police station that's going to spend money per se, but it is, it is going to be, it is going to be a big attractive, you know, at least cosmetically, and it's been so needed for so long, so.
Any other comments? Okay, Council Wodecki.
The only thing I want to say, the only, one more thing I want to say is, I know that we look at these projects and we say cost per square footage, but in the years that I've sat here, I've come to realize that what you and I can build for the cost per square footage, the town can't. I mean, we're still trying to redo our bathrooms in here and the price is ten thousand dollars a bathroom. And that's why those bathrooms are still like that. Now, you or I would not spend ten thousand dollars to do our bathroom. So, we have to remember sometimes that because we're a municipality, somehow we always pay more money.
Any other comments? Council Soms?
I was asked a question about whether I thought this building was a good use of funds and I'd like to give an answer to that, just as a means of educating people who are listening. This police station was built with a thirty-year view. In other words, when the municipal building committee looked at this, when the police provided their input to the person leading or facilitating the discussion, they went out thirty years. So, the point is, we're not building a building that in ten years we're going to have to add on to or replace, which is the building we've got right now. The building we've got right now, you know, was smaller than it should have been in the wrong place and, you know, it was a good deal, price-wise, but that was about it. This building is built for thirty years out and that's a good deal because when you build municipal buildings with a thirty to fifty-year life, you don't go back and add on to them, you don't go and have to do things that you should have done the first time. And you do it in today's dollars versus future dollars. So, same as the high school without a pool, this, I think, is a good deal. And everything you said about being at Legyard Center, I love it.
Any other comments? Councilor?
Yeah. It happens when the news goes on longer than an hour.
I appreciate the positive comments, I appreciate the support, but I guess that makes me the second most unhappy person with this police station. I, you know, I'm disappointed in the price and, you know, I'll admit it, we kind of ran out of time. And I know that's not a good thing to say when you're going to the people because the discussion you had in previous moments about why don't we spend more time? Keep in mind a couple of things. Number one, one of the first things that the municipal committee has to do is hire architects. I know people just make the assumption, oh, you get the thing, call you out the next day. No, hire an architect. And I know one of the first questions that I'm going to ask the architect for the police building, that's going to be a criterion, I'm going to tell you what it is. But I think there are things that we can do. I think there's a willingness on the part of the building committee to make those things happen. Because we had to spend so much time on the site selection, we really didn't get a chance to scrub the building away, I think we should, I think this, you know, ends again. So, that's the first thing. But even before that, one thing we have to do, and this discussion may spur it, is we really need some objective, independent, uninvolved people, uninvolved in the projects or the particular interests, to sit on the building committee. I have to make two appointments to the building committee, or I have to recommend two appointments to the building committee for this police station. I would love to get some really good people, I have one in mind, you know, that have a background which the ordinance or the resolution really requires, the background in finance, background in construction, because I think there are suggestions that could be made that could really bring the price of this down. So, you know, I would really look for people in the public who are interested in doing that and maybe people, maybe the most skeptical people after me about the price of this building and get them in there to say, you know, study it, scrub it, and what can we do? And we are locked in somewhat by the site, we're locked in somewhat by the design district,[1785.13] but I think there are things that we can do, in looking at the functionality of the building, functionality, the space usage. You know, the architect was at a little bit of a disadvantage, you know, we kinda threw a whole bunch of information at him, and he laid it out. Well, you know, there might be other ways that we can do it. So I appreciate the support, but I think there's a lot of work to do, you know, we're not going to go out to bid on this building, on either of these buildings the next day either. We have to, you know, you basically start with a clean piece of paper to a certain extent, and starting with the detailed drawings, and there's a lot that can be done within the parameters of the four walls to change the cost of the building.
Councilor Wadecki.
And then I just wanted to say that the, the building committee has already reduced the size of this building, it came in at, what, 16,000 square feet?
14,000.
Yeah, so they've reduced the size, and so I think that there was some pencil sharpening already happening, and since the mayor has just said he's not happy with the price, he just kinda shares all our opinion of the price, that I think we'll see some more sharpening.
Okay, just on a final note, oh, did you have a?
No.
Just on a final note, I, I wanna make sure that the building committee, everybody involved, takes a minute to read the process. There is a ordinance for the permanent building committee that spells out some things, and it makes reference to a document that spells out the timeline for a building project. It's time to get back on the right track with these projects, so, and, and the building committee will be the people that will be hiring the architect.
Yes, they will be.
So, okay. Mayor Roxanne, would you call the roll? See, he all has.
Yeah, we have to. We have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you keep referring to the building committee, the, the one building committee is gonna do the two projects.
Correct, but, but.
They'll be different people.
They'll be different people. There'll be a core of people, but then different people.
The building committee is, is seven, and they're allowed to have two appointments from the school.
Presented.
Yeah, so, so they're, they're seven, and then two more for each, but they will be doing both projects, but I suspect the projects won't be anywhere near the same timeline, because the school one's gonna take much longer to build than the police one is, so a few times, they may have a little crunch, but I think you're gonna find them going off on different paths for timelines.
Thanks for that question, because it does clarify, thanks for everybody. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. France.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen.
Yes.
Mr. Songz.
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski.
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Councilor France.
Motion to waive the reading in its entirety, the council resolutions approving bond resolutions and calling town meeting and referendum. In addition, adopt the council resolutions approving bond resolutions and calling town meeting and referendum.
Second. Discussion.
Well, as I said, what this does is call a town meeting, a special town meeting for both projects on May 7th, 7 o'clock, and follow that town meeting, be adjourned to the referendum, which will be held on May 21st. The town meeting held in the high school auditorium is more followed on that subject.
And this is the point where the council says that we have put it forward to the voters. People get to vote on this project, whether they approve it or disapprove it, and I hope they get themselves educated and understand what they're voting on, just don't look at the price tag.
Yes. Now, I guess what I had, make sure you ask questions, if there, if you read the documents and you have questions because you don't understand them, or you feel there are holes in them, and the documents are available online at your website, so if you have any questions at all, please ask.
Please say what were those two dates again?
May 7th is the town, the special town meeting.
Okay.
The 21st is the referendum for the budget and the two.
Right, okay. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen.
Yes.
Mr. Songz.
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski.
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
What were those two dates again?
Motion to adopt a fiscal year 2013-2014 budget in the amount of $50,136,531, comprised of a general government budget of $20,442,567, and a board of education budget of $29,693,964.
Second. Discussion.
A brief overview, two halves of the budget, the board of education budget came in with the appropriate amount flat, it slightly increased due to a grant amount for VOAG that increased last year, and is part of their anticipated funding from the state, so their budget went up approximately $115,000, which is the amount of that grant, but the, the cost to taxpayer remains the same as it was in the previous year. On the general government side, the increase is on the order of about $300,000 over the previous year. There are three principal areas that the increase is driven by, the first being healthcare, which is about $350,000. We had some structural, infrastructure, in the main means of software, with our new financial software, and other things related to that, which are relatively small amount, and finally, there was a scrub done in capital improvement plan in several areas that we took another look, and looked at the costs of vehicles as an example, and identified some small amounts that we needed to add to, to be able to make sure that we have sufficient funds in the capital improvement plan, where those purposes need to be made. So those are the three big areas that drove a slight increase in budget.
Actually, there was a fourth area, construction.
Oh, right.
But, but the capital improvement plan, I wanted to speak to that, to the project. Years ago, back when Council Rodrigo was on the council, we weren't putting aside money to buy big trucks, we weren't putting aside money to buy fire trucks, and when we had to buy something, we had to come up with, at that time, it was only $65,000 for a dump truck, and now $130,000. So as we bought this last truck, we realized that we're not escalating, I mean, in 15 years, the cost of the truck doubled, so we, we haven't put enough of an escalator in for, you know, out years, because we have these capital plans that say, in 2012, we need to replace this, in 14, 18, and this is how much money we need, well, we weren't really putting enough money aside, and we still have to tweak it a little more, because we're not doing enough for public works trucks, you don't think, but we had to do a major increase for the fire departments, because the fire trucks are really going up, and so that, in the capital plan, we've gotten to the place where we're finally putting enough money, or putting money aside for everything, we just now have to get to the point where we're putting enough money aside. But it was a great idea, we had years ago to do it, it's working, but it needs a little bit of an escalation, so that was the big driver in that dollar figure.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrathen.
Yes.
Mr. Songz.
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski.
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
I can see why it was painless in finance.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
A motion to adopt a proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 water operations budget.
Second. Discussion. I'm sorry, discussion.
Budget as presented by the WPCA, is a slight increase in the cost, approximately $28,000, based on that, presented by Mr. Diaz, is anticipating an increase in the water rates that will be presented down the road, about 13%, and the sewer rate about 5%, about 5% down the road. With the WPCA, while it was the town council, now it's become a separate entity, they've been able to get a better grasp on the revenue side, they feel they've got a much better handle on it, and can now, with some relative certainty, understand the cost, both in the sewer side and the water side, and if you have a much better handle on that.
Yep, so, so some of the history here, and I gotta tie the budget into this rate increase, and the, and the better financial information we've had. In 2008, the WPCA came to the town council and asked for a 30% rate increase, and, well, it wasn't necessarily felt that a rate increase was unneeded, there were questions about what should the rate increase be, and the WPCA just didn't have the numbers or the ability to say how they came up with 30, 30% increase. It was more of a, well, we kinda see where we're going, and 30% would make things a lot better. In the years since, we, we have gone through quite a few different versions of WPCAs, but we've also installed new financial software, and we've got some help in the finance department, and we now have better information, what we've learned is several things we kinda knew all along. Number one, the sewer department has been setting money aside for maintenance and for refurbishment, just like the capital plan. Unfortunately, the WPCA, the water side was borrowing from those funds, whereas the sewer side put it aside for future expenses, water was using it. Secondly, we, we realized, and we've known this for a couple of years, we had extremely high receivables on water and the sewer side, so the office staff worked very hard to reduce the receivables, and they created revenue streams of about $100,000, which funded the continuing operation of the department. We've also talked for years about setting aside, for, for, I'm gonna say five, six years, longer, setting aside money to do things like repaint the water tower, which is now, I think, seven or eight years old, we've never set any money aside, so what we do is we, we approve a budget, setting aside $15,000 every year, and then we wouldn't have the money, we wouldn't set it aside. We recently discovered that the wheeling fees that we've been receiving from sending water across the Thames River, which were supposed to be set in account for maintenance of the Holberg water tank, also wasn't being set aside. So basically, we're doing, the WPCA has been operating in the exact reverse of what Council Wadecki just described, and right the way the rest of the town operates. We haven't been setting aside any money for future renovations or replacement. The sewer plant in the next three to five years is going to need some upgrades, replacement of aging materials and equipment, we're going to have to paint that water tank, and we're going to run out of cash, because we can no longer find this $100,000 revenue stream for collecting our receivables. So the current WPCA, with this better information, thanks to the mayor's office, set a rate increase for both departments, both sewer and water, and that's where we're going with that. But the budget this year was based on a look back at last year, we, it's difficult to use year-to-date for the water department, because you use different amounts of water at different times of the year, and you set money aside, or you spend money differently throughout the year. So it's very hard to do a month-to-month projection to say what next year's gonna be like, but we were able to get data from last year, 12 full months of data for expenses, and that's how we came up with this, so, thanks to the current WPCA, our hard work and help of the finance department.
Councilor Eichelberg.
And I'd just like to add to that, kudos to the current WPCA for finally getting a handle on the finances of WPCA, and understanding what's coming in, what's going out, where it's going. From the short time I spent on the WPCA, that was a big problem, so again, kudos to the current members of WPCA.
Councilor Wadecki.
I think the kudos go to the mayor's office for making sure that we got the information. We weren't able to get it as a WPCA, because we thwarted it, every, every time we tried to get it, we were getting nothing. The mayor decided that that information was needed for the WPCA to do their job, and made sure that the information was provided, the new financial software made it much easier for that information to be provided, but the WPCA, when we were the WPCA, the WPCA that is now, couldn't get the information without help from the mayor's office, so I think the kudos need to go there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Although I am glad they got, finally got numbers, and I'm glad that we're now talking about a rate increase that probably we can agree. I mean, when they came with a 30% rate increase, we're all looking across the table at each other going, why? And we gave them a 10%, but that was five years ago, they got a 10%, so if they needed a 30, that probably wasn't, that probably wasn't the right number. You know, I think maybe 13, maybe we should have done what halfway along the way, but because we didn't have any numbers, when we were the WPCA, that we can understand, I mean, our big thing was, I'm not gonna raise somebody's water rates if I don't understand why they need to be raised to this level, because while they were, you know, we're the council, we, we talked to the taxpayers, when we were the WPCA, we answered to ratepayers, and I, you know, we couldn't come up with a number. Now we have some real good numbers, and we don't have to do the public hearing.
I was at the last pub, public hearing, I think it was myself and one other person was at that public hearing. It was not a pretty scene.
No.
Not a pretty scene, because the information wasn't there.
Wasn't there.
So, okay, any more discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Songz.
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecki.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski.
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number 13.
A motion to set a public hearing date on April 22nd, 2013, at 7:00 PM, to be held at the Lenner High School Auditorium, to receive comments and recommendations regarding the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget.
Second. I'm, I'm just gonna, at this time, question, you know, I, I added another agenda item in regards to a public hearing on the two projects, and this is probably not a bad time to discuss it, because it kinda connects with that, and while I realize that we're not obligated to hold a public hearing on those two items, my question is, should we, and if we do, should we do it at the same time as the public hearing on, on the budget? And so I thought I would throw out there this now, and if we decide not to, I'll just withdraw my motion, but I just kinda wanted to get a sense of a cap of counsel here.
Well, I guess my question there would be, when we have the public hearing on the budget, we have the ability to make changes after the public hearing. If we had a public hearing on these bond projects, we would not be able to make changes, so wouldn't the public hearing, in essence, be exactly the same thing as the town meeting? And do we need to present, I mean, I would think that.
Good point.
I, I would think that the public hearing for these, the budget, we could show, because we did it at the last time that we were having, you know, projects, referendum questions, we could have a, you know, some kind of presentation of these two projects, and people, people may still speak to them, but I don't know that you wanna have a specific thing you call the public hearing, because we can't change it.
Okay.
And a public hearing makes people think that their opinion matters, and that, and it's not that it doesn't matter, I don't mean it that way, let me rewind now. I mean, it, it, it doesn't.
Oh, you're the chairman.
You know exactly where I was going, and it means, I mean, their, their opinion matters, but they can't, we can't change it, you know, so.
You can't change your opinion either.
Probably not.
Okay, and that's a sense, okay, good, so we'll, I'll, when we get time to it, I'll withdraw my motion, but.
But we should have presentations on both of these projects at that public hearing. My only hope is that there's more than us there.
Well, I guess my comment to that would be, when we make the public announcement, we ought to state that it's going to include a discussion of the projects.
Or presentation.
Presentation of, and take questions, that, as opposed to calling it specifically a public hearing on those two subjects.
Okay, then let me ask, if we do that, then what is the point of having the town meeting on May 7?
It's required to have that.
Okay, so what should, wouldn't it be better to, to do the presentations on May 7, instead of doing them twice for all of us?
Roxanne's raising her hand.
Roxanne, yeah.
In the past, when we presented building projects that were voted on the same day as the budget.
Been declared.
What we've done is, we've had the special town meeting for the projects, per the requirement of the charter and the bond documents, that was held in early May, like we're going to be doing, but it will be May 7th this year. Then we had the public hearing, well, first we had the public hearing on the budget, that's always in April, then we had the special town meeting on the projects, then when we went to the town meeting, the annual town meeting for the budget, we did a recap of the projects. So we presented the projects in early May, did a recap, reminded them that we go to So we presented the projects in early May, did a recap, reminded them that we go to the voting room tomorrow, we'll be asked to go around the budget and these two questions. So the town, special town meeting was where the projects were presented, as Council Wodecki said, people have an opportunity to ask the questions, there is no opportunity to change the projects there. So that's, that's in the past.
Okay, but then we shouldn't really do a discuss, presentations on April 22nd because then that would mean we're doing it three times?
Yes.
Okay, so, any, yes.
People get overloaded. I mean, just sitting through the budget presentation on April 22nd is enough. It would become confusing. And I think they should be, you know, held on another day.
No, I, I agree.
I see the, the bond projects as public information sessions opposed to public hearings. So public information session, as, as Roxanne said, if we do it before the, the May 7th, you know, as, as a separate meeting, I think it makes more sense.
Wait a minute. Roxanne just said we, we would do it on the 7th and then do it again on the-
20th.
20th.
It's 20th of the, of the town meeting. 20th of May.
Exactly, yes.
But not on April 22nd.
Correct.
Right, 22nd. Consider it a public information session, separate from a public hearing.
We're not going to have a recap.
Recap. This is going to be called a special town meeting.
But not. Yeah, right, but I see it as like having a-
Yes, it's like- Oh, oh, okay, okay. I didn't touch the like in that, I thought he was thinking that we're going to have another reading there.
Okay, so there'll be, I guess the point is, there is going to be plenty of opportunities, two really good opportunities for people to make comments. Council Wodecki?
And I, I would just like to reiterate that with this amount of money, especially with this amount of money, I, I want to give as many opportunities to the public for comments, questions, information as possible, even if it is just us that shows up. I want to make sure we give them those opportunities.
They have an opportunity every other Wednesday night to speak to us as well?
That's true, though.
But, but it's true, but they get to speak to us, but we, there's not a duty to take.
Well, sometimes it's-
We don't, we don't always have the information available to respond to the questions.
True, I, I'm saying that the, the public has a lot of opportunity to speak to us about things besides just these venues. So I just wanted to point that out. They could come, they could come and ask questions, even if we can't answer them, we, we always get the answers that we, from someone to answer the public.
As does Mr. Monahan.
But on the projects, we're not changing numbers. It's strictly informational, and that should be made known to them before they come and try to, you know, ask us to reduce the price.
Okay, for clarification for the reporter and for anybody listening, okay, public hearing on the budget is April 22nd. May 7th is the town meeting on the two projects.
Correct.
May 20th is the town meeting on the budget. At that time, we will also do a short presentation on the projects for anybody different that may be-
That's the one that would be passed, number 14.
Right, right.
Yeah, and, but I wanted to just get it all in one place. And then May 21st will be the referendum.
Of course.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody, and then we'll, we'll move on to that, so. Okay, at this point, we're voting on the motion to set the public hearing date on April 22nd. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number 14.
Make a motion to hold the annual town meeting regarding the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget on May 20th, 2013 at 7:00 PM at the Lender High School Auditorium, and to adjourn to a referendum to be held on May 21st, 2013 between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. In addition, should the referendum fail, the subsequent referendum will be held between the hours of 12:00 PM and 8:00 PM in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 5 of the Town Charter.
Second. Any discussion? I think we've probably beat this one to death. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number 15.
We got the hard stuff done.
Make a motion to appoint Con Resnick, fully J. H. Con, to conduct auditing services for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013 for a fee of $51,500, with the option of auditing the town's financial statements for each of the two subsequent fiscal years in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 11 of the Town Charter, as a result of bid number 2011-03 auditing services.
Second. Discussion?
The fact they keep changing their names.
Yes.
Okay. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nemrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, Landryson Planning, item number 17.
Motion to recommend the town council assign the town-owned volbee property located at 1479 Rock 12 to the Conservation Commission. In addition, recommend the town council approve the updated appendix B, listed for properties owned or leased by the town's budget, as contained in the draft dated March 25th, 2013, of the resolution establishing administrative control of town-owned or town-deased properties to include assignment of the volbee property.
Second.
So this is just taking the volbee property which was recently acquired with state grant and assigning administrative control to the Conservation Commission to maintain and has open space and prevent development of the property.
Any questions? I have a question. I decided it was a grand idea to have a dog park at that property. Would conservation let me?
Probably not.
Okay, I will be voting against it. Because I think we're restricting the use of that property by giving it to conservation.
Whose control is it under now?
Hmm?
Whose control is it under?
Technically, it's under ours.
Okay, and the mayor suggested who?
Originally, the mayor suggested Parks and Recs.
So why would it be another soccer field?
Because the reason we did, Land Use Committee had recommended, or the Conservation Commission, it's really been recently, the reason why we requested to repurchase property in the first place was to expand the approach with the sub-rate base for cases of, of ordinance detonation, accidental, the ordinance detonation at the subbase. My concern in that, I think, most of the time, is that only use in the planning commission for that, if you give it to Parks and Recs, and God forbid, something does like that happen at the subbase in the middle of a little league ballgame, that would not be a good thing. So that's, we kind of felt that in order, in the spirit of the reason why we acquired it in the first place, was to not limit access to the property as far as people hiding out or using it, but not to build something there that could bring people to it.
And the Conservation Commission also marks trails, maintains trails on town-owned property. And I'm not convinced that they would be opposed to a dog park. I see a dog park as like trails.
Well, it depends if you have a fenced-in area. I mean, any, you can take your dogs, walk them anywhere, so an actual dog park usually involves fencing in an area that the dogs can run without leashes, so-